Mr. Collagen, can you do the part of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Collagen. Today's workshop topic is student achievement data. That will be given by Dr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mrs. Osuba. I'm losing my voice, so I have Mr. Neil Weather here with me tonight to help me with this presentation. Tonight we'll be talking about student achievement data, in particularly two pieces of data. Our benchmark data and our DBELS data that is given at grade K, 1, and 2. Why is this important to us? Why is student achievement data is important to us? We have put in place several district initiatives, social curriculum maps aligned to the Common Core, or benchmark assessment, map assessment, the coaching model, the team data process. I would like to say that as you look at the preliminary data, we see some very good news. We see movement. We see our student achieving, we see our student moving from needs improvement to approaching and to proficiency. And this is very good news. Particularly, we see a lot of movement, positive movement, in the lower grades, 2nd and 3rd grade. So tonight we'll talk about two major pieces of data that we're using. The benchmark assessment, that is the Riverside interim assessment, and the DBELS, that is our early literacy indicator at K and 2 and 1 grade. So those for your information before we start looking at the data. What is Riverside interim assessment? It's a formative assessment, diagnostic assessment, that is designed to measure the Common Core standards in ELA, Language Arts, and Mathematics. It provides information to school district and to schools and to teachers about the progress that students are making regarding the attainment of the skills and concept of the Common Core. We can use it also to look at the instructional program. We also can use it to prepare for our RTI, respond to intervention process. We also use it to identify strengths and weaknesses in our instructional program. It informs instruction in the classroom. We also, again, can measure mastery of the Common Core. And as I said before, help implement the research, specifically research-based intervention, SRBI, known RBI for some. So that's what we're using in our district. When do we give this? We give this in grade through to 11, three times a year. The beginning of the year, middle of the year, and at the end of the year. It takes about an hour?
It varies by grade level.
It varies by grade level, but it's 30 to 40 items, multiple choice. They're part of the assessment, and they are reported primarily in three performance band. Needs improvement, approaching, and proficient. These are the three bands. So, any question about that before we continue and look at the data? Someone asked Mr. Neil, and we will team tag here and present it. As soon as I can't speak anymore, you'll have to take over. As you take a look at the chart that is there, we have, the fall benchmark was given is the red color that you see there, and the blue benchmark is the winter color. The first band that we have is the needs improvement. So we want to see that red diminish when it reached to the 2nd band and to the 3rd. As we look at 2nd and 3rd grade, at the beginning and the fall, as you can see, the needs improvement were very high. We're looking at 66% in 2nd grade and 67% in 3rd grade. However, as we move to approaching, as we move through the winter, that needs improvement has diminished by 20-something percent. As we look at 2nd grade, we went to 37%, from 66 to 37%. So we're able to move those kids that were in the lowest performance band. And in 3rd grade, as you can see, we're at 67%, we went to 41%. We're able to move those kids that was the lowest performance. And we increase in proficiency, and we increase in approaching. So what you see there is a positive movement, moving the kids that are in the needs improvement to approaching and to proficient. That's what we want to see. And this is those, I will say, more than half of the year. They took the test in September, and they took it again in January. We're looking at ELA at this time. 4th and 5th, we see also movement, not as much as 3rd and 2nd grade, but we also see positive movement in those grade. And I can say to you, the kids that are in 2nd grade are seeing the Common Core material for the first time. They're starting with them. The kids that are in 4th and 5th have not seen the Common Core standards before. So as you move higher in grade, you may not see that jump as much as you see it in the lower grades. Yes?
Just to sort of piggyback off of what Dr. Garcia said, additionally to that, when the instructional ICs, the instructional consultants, looked at the benchmarks, they noticed in grades 2 and 3 that more of those items, covered material that had already been taught, versus as you move up grades 4, 5, and 6, 7, and 8. So it makes sense that you see more dramatic change in those earlier grades. So that's one thought we have towards that.
And that all goes also with the pacing of the units. So you will cover more material in 4th and 5th, you're covering less material in 2nd and 3rd. So definitely very aligned to what Mr. Neil just said. So we have 6th and 7th. We see the same movement, a little different in 7th. We want to see a higher degree in movement in 7th grade. However, it is positive movement. We have gone from 53 to 35 in the needs improvement, and from 66 to 58 in 7th grade. Again, positive movement, moving the needs improvement to approaching and to proficient. And that's what we want to see. So here we have 8th and 9th grade. Again, we need to work a little bit more harder in 8th and 9th. We're asking some questions. But again, as Mr. Neil said, and I said before, the kids in 8th and 9th grade are seeing the Common Core material for the first time. So all these years that they've been in school, they never have that material. As we move higher in the grade, you will see that that jump is not as big as the lower grade. And then we have 10th and 11th. Movement in 10th grade, no movement in the positive direction in 11th grade English. We are doing some research. We're asking question. I asked Mr. Neil to research what happened in the 11th grade. It's the only grade that we did not see any movement of moving, reducing the needs improvement column. So we're looking at the benchmark itself, we're looking at the question, we're looking at the instruction. What took place in 11th grade? Why we did not see any movement? But so far, it's the only grade we did not see. Did we come up with any answers to that?
So a few questions that we're asking. While we are looking, the English department themselves at the high school was also looking, and we were asking some similar questions. So one of the things that we noticed, well, one of the first things you do when you see the bars is that there are performance band. And all that a performance band is a group of scores. So within that band, there could be movement. So the first thing you look at is, is there movement within that band? Like the number correct, the percentage correct on the test? So there could be movement within the band. So there were some, but not a tremendous amount. So then you ask the follow-up question, well, why? So in doing that, we discovered a few things that happened in grade 11 that didn't seem to happen in grade 9 and 10. So grade 9, 10, and 11 ELA had the same staff working on the curriculum design. So in terms of map design. So I feel those are consistent across the board. Then you look at the assessment in grade 11, and there were some questions about the nonfiction nature of the passages. So we started looking at those as, and again, what Dr. Garcia said earlier, in grade 11s with the shift, the largest gaps are going to be in the grades at the end of the spectrum. The other thing we started to look at, and we were able to do through data director, and the English department and the high school was looking at this, we were looking at the actual time on test. And when we are looking at this, what that means is, there were students that were completing the test from their winter administration, from their fall administration, in a far shorter time. And in an interesting correlation, those students were not showing a greater score. In some cases, showing an equal or lesser score. So we were looking at that and inquiring the administration itself. Obviously, they didn't unlearn what they learned, you know, from September. So it raised a question for us to look in the spring administration. We did not see that in grade 10, where you do see some movement, and we did not see that in grade 9 or with, is great frequency. So we are looking into why those results were that way.
With that said, we also had a discussion regarding the type of text that 11th grade students are reading in 11th grade. And in conversation with our director of ELL and others, 11th grade English at the high school is reading predominantly literature. Foundational texts. And so we have to make the movement from the foundational text to the nonfictional text. And so not only in English that should happen, that should happen in social studies and science, et cetera. So we have some work to do with 11th grade English, or 11th grade in general at the high school, to motivate them to move to nonfiction text. It's not the same thing reading Don Quijote la Mancha or Shakespeare than reading some piece. The Independence, exactly. Declaration of Independence. It's much, much different. And so there's some work to do there. Okay. So that's our English score across the district, very, very positive. We are looking at those scores now by subgroups, ELA, special ed, et cetera. We're looking at those scores by school, by grade, by teacher in order to help individual school and individual teachers. But what we're seeing here is very positive movement towards improvement and achievement. The challenge that we have is maintaining this with the teachers and with our students, in maintaining this journey as we go along next year, and the following year, and the following year. Eventually, if we continue to do this, and we really continue with our plan, our 2nd graders, when they get to 5th and 6th grade, will be better prepared for middle school and for high school.
I had the opportunity to talk to some 11th graders who took this test.
Yes.
Two things came out that it was given, it was administered the day after midterms, and they were completely exhausted, and they were brain drained. They had spent copious amounts of time studying to pass the classes that were in front of them. And their quote was, "This doesn't matter," so I didn't care. I think that your timing, and we looked at, I'm taking this amongst all of us. We looked at the calendars at our summer retreat, and we saw when things were being administered. I don't necessarily think we took into account when their classroom exams like midterms and finals and stuff like that were being administered, because they literally came in the next day and said, "I'm not being graded on this, I don't give a hoot." And I think that they just seriously sat down at the computers and went, "A, B, B, A, B, C," and they talked to their friends. I know that it was found that some of these tests that had taken an hour, an hour and a half previously were completed in as little as two minutes. That shows me that they are not putting any effort into reading or looking at any of this data. And that the fact that maybe we need to look at this before we do finals and when this testing is, and not make that too close, because they're going to be far more concerned about what they're getting on their final exam in biology at Wyndham High School than they are on some benchmark that isn't going to affect their grade in the least.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and that's a very good point. But the window of testing is an entire four weeks. So we will talk to the high school administration when they're scheduling this. We do not schedule the test. We give them a window administration. So we give them four weeks to take the benchmark assessment, and they develop their schedules. But point well taken, we'll talk to the high school administration and bring that point to them. Don't schedule midterm with your benchmark. But there's plenty of window to take that. And likewise, we do not schedule their testing. It's much for us, the school themselves individually with their principals schedule their testing.
I think Mrs. Lambert's got a point that.
Yeah, definitely, it's a good point.
... attending to, which is redundant testing. That is, why do you have to have a midterm? If you got a benchmark test, why do you have to have a midterm?
Well, I question that. Why do we need a midterm? That's a very good question. If you have your benchmark assessment that is testing, why do we need to have a midterm? And by the way, that's a very good point. If you do your research, and I know you will, across the country, midterm are being eliminated. In the state of Connecticut, a lot of high school are eliminating midterm. We asked that question.
Midterms or finals, the question is, if the idea is testing what the students have learned, which is, you know, when I was a student taking tests and when I was a professor giving tests, the question was, what have the students learned? If the benchmarks actually are going to tell you that, then use the benchmarks for the grades.
Or our maps.
Then the students will pay attention to the benchmarks.
Or our maps also. So that's a very good point. You know, we're not ready to have that discussion, but we already start looking, and we asked the question. Why have midterm?
Except that is an issue about overtesting.
Sure.
And if we're giving a midterm and a benchmark, and we had some statistics earlier about, you know, between the test mandated by the states.
Yes.
And the benchmark test that we want to use, it adds up, I mean, I don't know where the government got their 2% number. I think they reached up and pulled it out of the sky. But in fact, when you add up all the time that we're spending on tests, on a mandated test, these tests, it adds up to about 2%. If you toss midterms and finals on top of that, then there's reason to believe we're overtesting.
So one point, the district does not mandate the midterm. So the question that we will ask is, what is the benefit of the midterm? What data is the midterm providing to us? And how are we using the data from the midterm?
Well, yeah, but the midterm is mandating the benchmarks.
I didn't hear.
The question is, are the students being overtested?
Well, they're taking a benchmark and they're taking a midterm.
So the question is, the question is, if, you know, I think there does need to be a serious discussion in the short run about why we are giving.
Midterms.
Dupli, you know, redundant tests. Whether they're mandated by the district or the teacher in the classroom decides to do it, if you spend twice as much time testing children as you ought, then we're not spending enough time educating, which is exactly what people are complaining about.
Well, I think there is a point in looking at the midterm. And like I said, there are lots of districts across the country, and in Connecticut, they're doing away from midterm. We can research that, Neil can research, and we can come back to you. Because the question that I had is, what is the value of the midterm? What is the midterm telling us? We have other tools that can give us information about what we're teaching. Our curriculum maps give us information about what we're teaching, and also the benchmark. So the midterm per se really does not give us. But at this particular time, we are not ready for that. That require a change of mindset, and it would be something that the board has to approve in a policy, like how some other school district does it recently, that eliminated midterm.
Except that what, I think Mrs. Lambert is probably correct. What just happened here is that by not dealing with that, we basically undermined the benchmarks.
Well, you are correct, and she is correct in that point. But it was not something that we wanted to deal with this year of the school administration. But I'm happy to take that on, and I'm happy to put it on the agenda for the board, because the question is, we do not see the benefit of the midterm. We do not, the data from the midterm is not making any adjustment in making sure that kids can perform better on the Common Core.
Yeah, based on what Ms. Lambert said about student comments, I wonder, do students understand the significance of the scores of these benchmark tests? Have they been explained how it affects, you know, they're coming out, maybe going to a university, maybe going somewhere else? And do they know? Do they understand? Because if they just take two minutes to do this, tells me that they really do not know the significance of what they're doing. The implication of scoring low on this test. It has to do with the, you know, the achievement, the school is, the district is perceived out there. A lot of things. So do they know?
They know precisely the implication.
Hold on, one at a time, please.
Which is, it doesn't matter.
Dr. Garcia?
Well, I mean, have they been explained? Have they been told what is the significance of that?
Okay, I can assure you, I'm pretty sure that the high school administration has taken some steps to explaining to them. Maybe now that we see this data, this result, there are different things and additional things that need to be done to explain it to them. But I can assure you, I mean, I'm not in the high school on a daily basis, but I'm pretty sure the high school administration have taken steps to explain to them the purpose of this assessment. But based on the results of this and based on the comment of Mrs. Lambert, then we should revisit this and should make sure that we implement different strategies.
Mrs. Lambert?
Dr. Gomez, I think what the students are looking at is, they aren't graded on this. It doesn't affect them directly. This has no impact on their education. These benchmarks are not going to have, especially when you get into the upper grades and they're out of here in a year or so, this has no impact on them. And so they have just given their all to get through their midterms, especially the ones who are going to try the hardest on this test. They're the ones that are in the AP and the ECE and the honors classes, and they are burnt out. And so saying, "Here's another test you have to take," but they're going to ask, "What are we being graded on this? You're not being graded on this." Well, then why do we care? They are teenagers, they are completely self-centered. They have no care for what we're doing here tonight. Do they show up tomorrow and the roads are plowed and the toilets are clean? That's all they care about.
Well, let me answer that. Some students from district, they do care about that. Don't tell me that some students in other districts don't care about how they're perceived out there and how well their school fares in this. It may happen in Wyndham, but other districts, I know some students in other districts, and they do care about doing well. So my point is, I maybe, I just want to know if they understand what I'm saying.
Okay, so I think we need to go back to something. These are diagnostic assessment. These are affirmative assessment. These are not summative assessment for grading. These are assessment done in order to inform instruction, in order to adjust instruction, and in order to improve intervention. These are done for the purposes, what do our students know and what they do not know in order to adjust our instructional program. It's not to give them a grade. That's, and that's a way of improving instruction. Formative assessment is a way of improving instruction. Our goal is to provide students with what they need. What do they know and what they need to know.
But if they don't care, if they do it in three minutes, you'll never know that.
You are correct.
That's my point, you know? I mean, there is no point in testing them if students don't care about it.
Okay, so let me.
If they say, "This doesn't mean anything," then let's just do whatever we want to.
Okay.
So how do you, how do you find out?
So let me say to you, I do not know if that's what happened. I'm willing to have a conversation with the high school administration, and that did not come across our conversation. We have been discussing the 11th grade. I have had Mr. Neil to investigate. We have been having conversation because of outlier. I mean, what happened here?
I don't know. I was just following up on what Ms. Lambert said.
So that's another piece of information that we have from Mrs. Lambert. That never came across the discussion in the past, but that's another piece of information. I will bring it to the attention of the administrators. We were discussing, okay, what is happening in 11th grade? What kind of text they're looking at? We concentrated our discussion on instructional focus and academics. If the issue is that students are, do not care, the entire 11th grade do not care, because this is the entire 11th grade. Put it back. Can we see 11th grade? If the issue is that our entire 11th grade students do not care, then we have a very serious problem here. Because as you can see, 11th grade did not make any movement. So we will have, Ms. Lambert, point is well taken. I will bring it back to the team and say, we have another piece of information. This is what we heard happen. Is that correct? But we are still investigating what happened, comparing the text of the assessment, comparing the text that teachers are using in their classroom, to figure out if that was an issue.
Miss?
Thank you.
May I ask two more questions?
In regards to this.
In regard to this, yes. In regards to this slide. Just one comment. Teachers are not going to make this assessment their midterm or final exam if they aren't given access to it. Teachers are not given access to what these questions are even going to look like before the exam. Studies have shown that transparency in assessment is considered a best practice across all districts across the country. Teachers are not going to be responsible for the grades that their students and the progress that their students make if transparency isn't given to them by giving them access to these tests before they're administered. So at that point, you're never going to get teachers to say, "Yes, this can be my midterm" if they aren't given access to it beforehand. And I understand we don't want them to teach to a test, but they have to know the subject matter and the questions and the topics that are going to be targeted in these.
Well.
And transparency, I've looked up some of the studies from Yale. There's one, another one from Harvard that says transparency and having that commitment on both sides that they are trusted to be able to tailor their teaching to these tests towards the kind of assessments. They don't have to know the exact questions from year to year, but some of these assessments have caught teachers completely off guard. The English Language Arts one, there was a science question in there. There were two historical, including one on suffrage and one on historical documents. I think it was on the Bill of Rights or something like that. So those aren't necessarily something that in an ELA discipline would be taught, and those caught teachers off guard. Some of the vocabulary in here isn't something that our students would know unless they had access to a thesaurus or a dictionary or something like that. And I'm not sure with the rapidity in which they took these tests that they would be willing to look these words up either.
So I'm eager to answer your question, because you're making my point. Number one is that they may not have seen it in English, but they may have seen it in social studies and science.
But you're holding the ELA teacher responsible for this.
Hold on for a second. That's why it is an instructional tool to tell the school, these are the things that your students are missing. So in social studies, I pointed to Mr. Lazar, because I know social studies teachers, they need to read the Declaration of Independence. Regardless, if it's an English class, an English test, we want them to read a piece of science. We want them to read a piece of social studies. We want them to read a piece of sports. Because reading is not only reading about Shakespeare, it's reading all the additional. So that's point. Second, then the high school is the only one, 11th grade, that is not doing what they were instructed to do. We instruct the instructional consultant to meet with every grade level and to go over, well, it's a benchmark. Why they need to take a look at the benchmark? With the IC, they look at what standards are going to be tested, what skills are going to be tested. Secondly, it's a benchmark. We expect to see lots of red in the first assessment. Then that red will diminish in the second assessment, and then that red will diminish again in the third assessment. So we don't, we're not, we're not concerned about the red in the first assessment.
Right.
What the red in the first assessment tells us is that we have a lot of work to do. Okay?
Right.
So we're not concerned about that. We're happy to see that the red has diminished in the second assessment, and that's the way to go. And we will see that the red will diminish in the third assessment. Evidently, something happened in 11th grade that we do not have the total picture and the total answer. We will bring your point to attention. But a benchmark assessment, again, Mrs. Lambert, is a diagnostic assessment. It's to say, what do you know, what you do not know? And, you know, you guys have given the superintendent a task of improving student achievement in the school district. Well, to improve student achievement, you do need benchmark assessment.
No, I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying that the way this is being administered now, you won't get teachers at the high school to consider making this a midterm or a final.
Well, I defer with you. I defer, because let's go back to 9th grade. I defer, I disagree with you respectfully, because there were movement in 9th grade.
Right.
And there were movement in 10th grade.
No, I agree, 11th grade is an anomaly. I'm saying, if Dr. Sewell had suggested making the benchmark a midterm or a final, I think that you will get resistance from your teachers, because they are then evaluated on their students' movement. And if they are not able to have any idea of how this movement is going to happen.
That's a secondary problem. If you make it, if you make the results on this test part of the teacher's evaluation, you've essentially double binded yourself.
Exactly.
And that's, that's not doable.
Correct.
That's not doable. I don't think you can make this function as a benchmark if it's also a measure of a teacher's effectiveness.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
Okay. I think, I think you can't have these tests doing double duty, because essentially, you know, if you want the teachers to improve student performance and you don't want them to teach to a test, then you can't make the test a source of the teacher's evaluation.
I don't disagree.
That's just not possible.
I don't disagree. That was part of the point I was trying to make, thank you.
That's absolutely right.
Thank you.
So you're going to have to decide what you want to do with this thing.
Right.
But this is to tell us what students are learning. The question is, how do you hold teachers accountable?
If that's true, then you don't want to make it part of the teacher's evaluation at all.
Well, the teachers, the teachers can use many other indicators. They can use their maps, they can use other indicators.
No, I'm talking about the test as part of the teacher's evaluation. That's not, that's a different, that's a different.
That's a different conversation.
Okay? But it should not be there.
We agree. We agree.
Yeah, absolutely. And then you won't have that resistance from the teachers about, "I have to see the questions ahead of time." And I prefer that the teachers not see the test questions ahead of time, because you don't want them teaching to the test. You want them teaching the content and the material and finding out whether the students learned it.
And that's the second, that was my second question, is, how does this align, or how are the teachers who are creating the curriculum maps able to make sure that this test aligns to their curriculum map or vice versa? Because we are paying HMH half a million dollars a year to do this testing, and we're not even sure it aligns with our curriculum maps.
HMH does not do this testing. This testing is Riverside Publishing. This is an assessment done by Riverside Publishing that is used across the country that is aligned to the Common Core. Our teachers are not developing this assessment. Our teachers are developing the Common Core unit assessment maps and the assessment for those maps that is aligned to the benchmark.
Who owns Riverside?
Uh, HMH.
HMH.
Right.
Okay. So HMH essentially is developing this, and they are the company that owns Riverside.
Right.
So how are we making sure that the curriculum maps, if the teachers aren't getting access and the teachers are ones developing our curriculum maps, how are we making sure the test aligns to the curriculum maps, or the curriculum maps align to the test? Because I know there's been some questioning of that in the past.
Well, let me, let me go back, I, I guess, this, this assignment, uh, this issue of testing is a very big issue. It's a benchmark, and I'm going back to this. At the end of the year, we want to cover all the standards, but some standards will be covered at the beginning, some standards will be covered in the middle, some standards will be covered at the end. If the teachers teach the standards and teach what they have in the curriculum maps, our students will do well. And we can see it here already, I mean, we see the progress thus in test one and test two that is taking place. There's major progress taking place here.
I'm not trying to take away from the progress that's being made, I'm just asking, how do we know that these things align themselves?
Well, that's why they're working with a consultant, that's why they're working in teams, that's why they work with a consultant, that's why they're working in teams. When they're working teams with a consultant, they look at the priority standards, they look at the assessment that they're developing, they look at what are the standards of, of the benchmark assessment. I believe, months ago, before we started this, HMH sent us the standards that were covered in the benchmark assessment.
Okay.
Let's move along.
We went to math, and in math, you can see the same thing, we saw progress and we saw movement.
It's a very similar pattern. It's a pretty similar pattern to what you had in, in language, correct?
Yes, it's very similar. I'm gonna speed through just 'cause I wanna talk about grade eight for a second. Alright, so in second and third, you see the shift decreasing in needs improvement and the, the increases in proficiency. Um, in grades four and five, similar. And then, in grade six and seven, also similar, grade seven is pronounced, but, grade eight, so, a, a couple things occurred in grade eight, again, um, so we looked at all the students that took both the fall and the winter, and we noticed, this time, there was a higher frequency of students showing, um, double-digit percentage growth in the test from their, their raw score. So, we, we started looking, and so Dr. Garcia and I had some, some discussions, and we've reached out to one of the grade eight buildings to follow up, 'cause we noticed a pattern, that where there, there was, um, greater growth in, in an area where there wasn't greater growth. So, we were able to follow up instructionally with that.
So, we wanna do the same thing in eight, in, in eleventh grade, we can, we can pinpoint what happened in what classroom in eleventh grade. And here, we started the conversation in eighth grade, we wanted to pinpoint exactly what happened in eighth grade, and we saw growth in eighth grade, there was growth in eighth grade. In, in two, in two of the academies, and there was not, there were no growth in one of the academies. And that one area brought down those grades, so there was growth in two, yeah, the two academies and not in one. And that's where, that's what you see, that there no major growth as, overall. But there were growth in two academies and in one, there were some issues of growth.
And then, going forward, in grade nine, ten, and eleven, um, those benchmarks were integrated math, meaning they combined geometry, Algebra One and Algebra Two. So, some districts, uh, do that across the country, our, our high school obviously does not. So, we used, um, Assess to Know in ETA, two item banks that we purchased from HMH to design our own benchmarks that were aligned to the maps, and these are the proficiencies. And just, um, even going back to, uh, English for a second, when it says English nine, English ten, or English eleven, what that refers to is the course, not the grade level, that's slightly different. You could have tenth graders taking English nine, for example. Um, and Algebra One has eighth, hundred, one hundred eighth graders took the Algebra One benchmark.
And so, yeah, so this can include your eighth and your ninth graders, taking Algebra One.
So, were the eighth graders that took the Algebra One, I'm sorry, included in the eighth grade benchmark math assessment? Or are those two separate assessments?
They did not take the eighth grade winter benchmark.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, okay. And then geometry and, and Algebra Two.
So, as you can see, we're, there are two grades that we have some question, eleventh grade English, that we do not have the final answer. On eighth grade math, that we do have the answer, we knew what happened there, we're doing some more research with, um, eleventh grade English. But, the point is, that this is very positive, this is very, uh, I will say motivating, we have to start somewhere. And we started at this point, and, um, with the help of teachers, the help of the coaches, the curriculum maps in place, uh, we're seeing the movement, and we want to continue with that movement. This is very positive, of course, the higher you get, it will be more difficult to obtain those scores. But we want, we, we, the first step of improving instruction is, is to have an aligned curriculum. We do have that now. The second step is really focusing on instruction in the classroom, and that's where we, we went to spend a lot of effort in changing practices in the classroom, helping and supporting teachers to deal with the issues that we have in the classroom.
It's gonna be interesting to see where we are a year from now, but-
Yeah.
But you've got, um, yeah, an alternative explanation for the pattern that we've got here is, is what's been in the research literature for years, which is, it's much easier to move children in the second and third grade than it is to move children in higher grades. And you've got a consistent pattern that, that shows that we gain a lot more with the younger children than we are with the, with the older children. Now, isn't it, so, so with the older children, the only question is, are we doing as much as we can? With the younger children, the question is, can we sustain where we get them to so that the next year, they start at a higher level than, than the class before them started? It's gonna be really good to, interesting next year, I, to look at the cohort data as these children move through.
So, the answer to that is, now that we have the first piece of, uh, of implementation, what is the curriculum, is, can we continue to implement effective instruction in the classroom? That will be the number two item that will make this pattern continue.
Another reason for being cautious about evaluating teachers on the basis of this is, it's much easier for a second grade teacher to achieve, uh, high gain than it is for a high school teacher to achieve a high gain.
Definitely, definitely.
And, uh, and so, the high school teachers may be doing the best they can and not getting much of anywhere because of where the students started.
As we said, the, the farther you get, you will not see the gains as high as the elementary. So, the higher you get, you will see, the gain will be reducing and reducing.
So, so essentially, what we really wanna know is, is these children that are in the second grade that, that are becoming increasingly more proficient, are, are they going to be that much more proficient when they get to be twelfth graders?
Okay, so I go back to my point, the research and clearly says that depending on the quality instruction, students either gain or loses. So, if we can maintain that quality instruction, but if, if the instruction is not effective, students can regress in their, in their performance level. So, you may see students that are doing very well in second and third grade, and if they don't have effective instruction in fourth and fifth, then you can see a regression. That's why it's very important for us, and we're making all the effort in supporting teachers, that's why we have a coach in every building, an ELA, and a math coach, and a data coach to support our teachers in changing instructional practices. And we have very good teachers, so the teachers that need that support is there for them.
Dr. Gomez?
I'm looking at this graph on math, ninth grade, ninth grade, before that. Okay, hundred percent needs improving, is that what it is?
Oh.
That's correct, I get it.
That's because, to explain the test.
Yeah, so-
There is no winter, no winter.
Right, so the reason there's no winter for that test is, one of the reasons that we believe there's a hundred percent there is that there were things tested in geometry and Algebra Two that students in Algebra One would never see. So, that's why it's called a Math Nine Benchmark, that's why we changed and reconfigured to an Algebra One Benchmark that matched the actual curriculum they're in. And the other thing was, the Math Nine Benchmark will traditionally, is more likely to have higher in the needs improvement because it's an end-of-year test. So, if everyone was proficient at the beginning of the year, that would mean you would need to radically, you know, improve your curriculum or make it more rigorous if they're already doing it at the end of the year.
But it's hundred percent needs improvement in math, in tenth grade, eighty-five percent, and ninety-one percent in eleventh grade? Is that what they are right now?
No.
No, no.
That's what they are right now. The, the, the next graphs, I purposely didn't put the graphs next to each other 'cause they're different assessments.
Okay.
So, a short explanation, when they took the test in the fall, they took the integrated algebra.
Okay.
And our teaching of algebra is based on the single unit algebra. Integrated algebra combined algebra, geometry, et cetera. So, but our maps are not designed that way, our maps are designed algebra, geometry, et cetera. So, the second test, as you can see, is the test that matches our design of our curriculum. And as you can see, in that test, we have a high level of proficiency for students. Again, because they took the test now, in January, and they have been receiving for the last, since September, courses in algebra, in geometry, et cetera. So, the first test, in short, did not match, the first test did not match our curriculum maps.
So, what did it match?
Integrated math.
Integrated math, across the country, there are two, there are two concept of mathematics. There is the integrated math that includes all, and there are the sole single courses. Algebra is poor algebra, uh, geometry is only geometry.
I, I get that, but it seems to me like it's very strange that even integrated or separated geometry and algebra, they can be hundred percent needs improvement in integrated math, because it's math anyway. And they both include algebra and they both include geometry. It just seems strange to me, let's say.
You're right.
I don't, I'm not questioning, but it seems, it seems very strange to me.
No, no, I asked that question, I asked that question.
Just remember, that assessment would be end of grade nine, given in September. So, that could lead to a higher percentage needs improvement.
So, if they hadn't seen Algebra One, and their first question taking that assessment was an algebra question that they couldn't answer, chances are, they're gonna blow off that test too. Because they're gonna feel overwhelmed and they're gonna feel out of their league. It's not gonna start with addition and subtraction in grade nine math if it's integrated math. They're going to assume that a grade nine student can do addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. The test is gonna start out maybe with a very simple algebra problem, but if a ninth grade student had never seen an algebra problem before, or been exposed to it before, because they'd only gone through a regular classroom eighth grade math, then they may be overwhelmed right from the start. It's like reading a test in another language, really, you know, their math has up to this point only been numbers, and now we're putting letters in it.
I understand that, but my question, now, I would say, if they do, now they're seeing, we're seeing, uh, Algebra One and geometry and so forth. If they go back and take an integrated math, uh, assessment test, how would you think they perform? Would they, would they still show the same needs improvement because it's integrated math?
Well, I don't think they will show the same needs improvement. However, the risk is that they will still face a lot of material that, that they will not see or have not seen. Because in integrated math, you will get geometry, et cetera, et cetera. In algebra, you're getting only algebra. So, they will be able to answer the algebra questions, but they will not be able to answer the-
But if they see both geometry and algebra?
They haven't had geometry, they haven't had geometry.
Well, we got geometry benchmarks here, though.
But Algebra One students haven't seen geometry, they've only seen Algebra One.
Oh, okay, so, uh, that's, it doesn't say that, it says algebra and geometry, it doesn't say that, that geometry is grade ten.
Right, so the, the Riverside makes their assessments for grade nine, grade ten, grade eleven. These benchmarks are based on a course, not a grade level, the algebra, geometry, and Algebra Two.
Wait, hold on, may I?
Sorry.
Thank you. All right, I have one, well, I have two questions, but it's really one question. If we are looking at this kind of math problems, math discrepancies, inability to do math at high school, why was the coach for the math moved to the middle school as a teacher? And why is there no data coach at the high school? Because you just said a couple minutes ago, that at every building, there is a math and ELA and a data coach. Here at the high school, we have an ELA coach only, who is trying to do a lot of this data work. I, I know because I spend time with her, and I see her doing work when we're together. And I didn't realize that there was no math coach, because I know who the math coach was, until I found out that she had been moved to the middle school. And so, now we have no math coach here with these assessments in front of us.
Well, the first job of the superintendent is to secure quality teachers in every classroom, in every classroom. We have a classroom that, since the beginning of the year, did not have a math teacher. And I have two math teachers that are coaches. Although I support coaching teachers, we could come up with another plan to support teachers at the high school. We placed our best teacher in that classroom that was missing a teacher since the beginning of the school year. Our, my responsibility as superintendent is teachers in the classroom first. And we could come up with another plan to support the high school teachers.
We're just looking at abysmal scores here, and I-
I disagree with you, the scores were given because of the wrong tests. When you look at their scores right now, based on what they've been taught, these are their scores.
I think district-wide, we should be looking, we should not even have to, I mean, I know we have to look at, but our needs improvement should be something that, not necessarily is an embarrassment, but is something that we shouldn't be touting. We should be touting the approaching and the proficient, we shouldn't be considering-
What is the needs improvement for Algebra One, Mrs. Lambert?
From here, I don't know the percentage.
Take a look at the needs improvement and take a look at the proficient.
Ten percent, no, I understand.
Sure.
But, looking at, when they get out of here, they have to have integrated math essentially, they have to have all three of them. We clearly need work in math, Dr. Gomez said it, we clearly need work in math, and we don't have a coach. When are we gonna get a coach?
Well, Mrs. Lambert, we'll get a coach when we can hire a math teacher. And as you know, we are trying our best to hire, to recruit. However, the decision between putting a math coach as a coach, a math teacher as a coach, and a math coach in the classroom, we needed a student, those, these students are having substitute teachers every day. I, I could not continue, the superintendent would not place a quality teacher in that classroom.
And when are we gonna get a data coach at the high school?
They have a position, they haven't hired one, but they have a position.
Can I answer my question?
Okay.
So, one question is, we're, we're, uh, we're beginning to teach algebra in the middle school, correct? So, should we be teaching integrated math in high school?
Correct, correct, and you're totally right. But keep in mind that these curriculum maps were, were done in August and September. At that particular time, that was not the appropriate decision. However, for the future, yes, we can be looking. The same way we're looking at developing a curriculum map to start teaching in seventh grade, the advanced algebra. So, kids that are moving out, the kids that are currently in eighth grade will not get it, but the other kids that are coming in sixth or seventh can get it. So, you're totally right, that's a conversation that we already had, but keep in mind that these were developed last year for this year, yes. Because it will help them also on the Common Core. So, these are good news, uh, if you take a look, if you take a look, uh, in your, in your pocket, uh, there is a slide that give you the actual numbers, and these are very, very, very good news. I, I celebrate and congratulate the teachers for their hard work, and the administrators, and the design team, and everyone that really worked very hard to make sure that this take place. Now, we have to continue working hard to, to continue improving these scores, but this is a good beginning. It give the school district hope, and it motivate them to continue, and we want to celebrate those good news. Now, we do have another piece of data that I want to share with you, and let's look at DIBELS. And I don't know how much I can do with DIBELS, I don't have to talk. Okay, we do wanna talk about DIBELS, and, um, reading is one of our main issue. And if you don't get to reading on level by third grade, when you get to fourth and fifth, and sixth is the main issue. So, we're putting a lot of effort in really making sure that our lower grade K one and two students can read on level. We have a K through twelve reading initiative in the district, where, uh, K through two is the foundation of reading, three to five is reading comprehension based on close reading, and six through twelve, close reading, reading comprehension. But the foundation of reading is very, very important. K through, K through, K one and two, um, K and one does not use the benchmark, the Riverside. They use DIBELS, the Foundation of Reading Skill. Rebo-, DIBELS is called the Dynamic Indicator of Basic Early Leadership Skills. It was developed by the University of Oregon, it's been in place for, from over, uh, since nineteen seventies. He has gone from DIBELS one, two, three, to DIBELS six, currently that's what we have. And it's a set of procedures to measure the acquisition of early leadership skill. The research is very clear, if students do not have the foundation skill, the phonemic awareness, the decoding, they will have problem at the higher grade level. So, we are using, DIBELS next, thank you, thank you. We are using DIBELS next, that is administering K through two, we have K two, three, but it's K through two, thank you, Mrs. Lambert. And it's, uh, I would say, a one-minute fluency measure. The, the composite test take about five to ten minutes, individual child to measure their literacy skills. You, can you take over?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Neil will have to talk.
How exciting for everyone, okay, so, um, in assessing the big idea on reading, so, DIBELS has a, a bunch of subtests, um, that are given and administered. Now, not all of these subtests are given every administration at every grade level, they vary. Um, but there's different portions of them based on the grade level and the time of the year. So, the, the subtests are letter name fluency, initial sound fluency, first sound fluency, phonemic segmentation fluency, nonsense word fluency, oral reading of fluency, retell fluency, and, uh, word use fluency. And each of them have different, um, refer to different categories such as comprehension, vocabulary, or phonological awareness or alphabetic principles, so-
We're not using the comprehension vocabulary, we're only using the phonetic.
Yes.
Let him, let him tell us.
Yeah, we're good, we're, we're good, Dr. Seer, good.
Raise your voice.
Okay, so, we, DIBELS is given as a benchmark- given as a benchmark screen three times a year. And some of the purposes of that are identification of early intervention to help students for the future. Going along with the theme, if you intervene early, it, it's preventative and helps for future student achievement success. These benchmarks are administered one-on-one with the student, and this number could be varied depending on grade level, but takes approximately five to 10 minutes per student, but that can vary on the number of subtests that a student is being given. Again, similar to when we're talking about benchmarks, there's three performance bands. The performance bands listed by DIBELS are well below benchmark, that's similar to our needs improvement, below benchmark, and then at or above benchmark. One note that I wanna make sure that everyone is aware of, that different than the, the benchmark tests that we were talking about, those, um, cut scores are very similar. Here, with DIBELS, the premise is that your reading skills will increase over time, so the cut scores actually increase on the subtests. So, even though the same test is given, the, the, you know, the, the goal, it's like lifting the high jump bar a little higher each time they take the test. So when you see the performance bands, I, I'll get into that in a second. So kindergarten and first grade are the two grade levels that actually can get what's called a composite score. That's taking all of the subtests together, and, and from that, you can get one overall composite score. The, the bars that are in green from fall to winter are the students that were at or above the, uh, the benchmark for, you know, basically proficiency. And then you also have below and then well below. And you can see that there is clearly a shift in kindergarten for the composite score from fall to winter for the district. In grade one, you don't see such a dramatic shift, but again, the, the, the reading benchmark has increased during that time. So, actually, in, in preparing this, I, I learned a lot about DIBELS, and one of the things that I did was speak to several of the CK three LI coaches and consultants that work with the district. And what they suggested, and what they recommend, is that each grade level has one subtest that's referred to a primary, as a primary indicator, and those, um, success on those by the end of the year indicates, has high predictiveness to their, their future reading, uh, performance. So in kindergarten, that particular skill is first sound fluency. So you can see in kindergarten that there is indeed, uh, from fall to winter, a dramatic shift. Thirty-nine at or above benchmark to eighty-two percent.
Is that there for a second?
Yeah, absolutely.
I want the board to take a look at this. So this is, the things that we're putting in place, the initiative in place, this is the big shift factor.
You can grab that.
Dr. Garcia, you need a microphone.
Yeah, grab the microphone.
Here, Neil's giving you one.
Dr. Seer, always talk about kids reading on level. This is hard work on the part of the teachers. That mean we need to continue training the teachers about teaching reading. We have Dr. Bulls that come in and work with us in the classroom, work with teachers. We have the coaches. If this continue, in the next couple of years, we should have kids reading on level when they go to fifth, sixth, and seventh. So first sound, first sound fluency is very important in kindergarten for kids to be able to read. It's one of the major indicators. If kids cannot do first sound fluency, they will have issue reading. So this is a major, major, major achievement. Again, you know, we wanna make sure that if kids continue in second grade and first grade, they have good quality of teaching in order to move them. But this, this is a major accomplishment.
Thank you. So in grade one, nonsense word fluency score, there's two subtests of that subtest, is the primary indicator listed by CK three LI, uh, recommended to use. So we looked at that, and you can see that the at or above benchmark went from forty-seven to fifty-seven. And then, uh, for the subtest of, excuse me, correct letter sounds, then when you move to whole words read, um, that at or above goes from forty-two in the fall to sixty-three in the winter. In grades two and three, they use the same primary indicator, which is oral reading fluency. And for the words correct, you could see in grade two that it went from forty-seven to forty-nine percent, but the actual number of words correct to reach benchmark in the winter is, um, a greater number of words. Um, and in grade two, you could see that it goes from fifty-eight to sixty-three percent at or above benchmark in the accuracy. And moving similar, uh, grade three for the, um, word count is very similar to grade two. You could see that it goes from forty-nine to fifty percent at or above benchmark, but when you look at the accuracy in grade three, it goes from forty-two to sixty-eight percent, um, at or above benchmark. Um, and one last thing that's not included in the slides here, um, learning in this, that the district did DIBELS several years ago. In our platform, we had, um, student data from two thousand twelve and thirteen, so it's not cohort data by any means, but when I looked, um, at the, the increase in scores in kindergarten and first, there was about, uh, a ten percent greater increase from this year's cohort of kindergartners than there was four years ago, and about seven or eight points greater increase, um, than there was, uh, in two thousand twelve, thirteen. Just as a, a point of reference, not to make, uh, leaping conclusions over that, but just a point of reference. And does anyone have any conclusions, uh, questions about the great DIBELS?
You answered my question, because we've been giving DIBELS for years.
What day you stopped giving it? You gave it, then you stopped.
Yeah, but, but it's, it, we've, okay, so we don't have a consistent set of data, but, but the test has been around.
Definitely.
And, and yet, we, we haven't, we haven't converted into third graders who can read. So, uh, what you're saying is that we're doing, we're doing a better job of teaching in kindergarten and first, second grade. It's, we're getting better scores than the DIBEL scores we have historically.
From that one year, yes.
And therefore, we should expect to start seeing third graders who are, uh, fewer third graders who are in need of improvement, coming out of the second grade. You know, and that's, I mean, if we're gonna get children up to grade level by the end of third grade, they have to be largely there by the end of second grade.
So, so, so let me share with you what the teachers do with this data. So the teachers, the teachers sit in group for grade level, K one and two, uh, with their coach, and with their, um, data coach, with the ELA coach and the data coach, and the CK three LI coach that we do have. And they look at where each kid is at at that particular time, what they're missing. And then we work with the interventionist to provide intervention, and then we work with the teacher. If the whole class is missing, uh, that sound fluency, then the teacher will have to go back and reteach. So it's very, I invite you to take a look at how the teachers sit down and look at data teams. Some schools do it much better than others, but if they, in the data team, when they look at what kids are, are, are missing, they're able to plan accordingly. And at the same time, the, the job of the coaches is to support the teachers in, in the classroom. This is hard work, and it's very intensive work. It doesn't happen over, overnight, but we have to continue, and, uh, doing this work, and we have to hold ourselves accountable internally and externally. And so we're working, and how do we hold ourselves internally and also externally? One of the way to hold, well, externally, the, the public will hold us accountable. We don't have to say much about that. Internally, the way of holding ourselves accountable is to supporting teachers and building the capacity. And I said teachers and administrators, because the administrators also are facing this. So I, I do wanna thank all of them for their hard work. I wanna thank Neil, Mr. Weather, that put all of this together. Uh, again, the task here is how do we continue with this teaching to make it happen? But I think this is very positive, positive news.
May I ask Neil one thing? Um, when we were looking at the high school data, are we looking at the same cohort? You brought that up, and it had been in the back of my head earlier when I was originally looking at it. Like, the cohort that took the test in the fall, is it necessarily the exact same number of students, the exact same students that took it in the winter, or is there a shift in cohort? I mean, kids are sick, kids come into the district, kids leave the district. How does that, I know that the data director is a little difficult to, to find that information on.
So what, those results weren't matched, but what I did in grade eleven specifically, and grade ten and grade nine, in, in math, it didn't matter, because they're two different assessments.
Right.
I looked at match scores, and if they're, interestingly, did, whether it's coincidence or whatever, they just happened to be extremely similar to the results showed.
Thank you.
But I did look, look into that. Thank you for the question.
There's still work that needs to be done.
I'm looking at the oral fluency, and I know DIBELS measures different things in the benchmark, and it says we're at sixty-eight percent at or above in the DIBELS, but only twenty-three percent in the district ELA benchmark. So-
There are two different-
No, I, I, I said that. I am aware that there, and, you know, the DIBELS is an oral exam more than anything, and the benchmark is, uh, a computer-based exam. And for some of these kids, it may be, these tests are some of the few instances they have to sit down in front of a computer, and that's also something that we need to be mindful of as we go forward.
Well, well, again, DIBELS is measuring phonetic words. The benchmark assessment is measuring reading comprehension.
Comprehension.
Two different things.
Exactly.
So what DIBELS is measuring is accuracy and pronunciation. The benchmark is measuring content.
Okay, that's what I said. Yeah, thank you.
Moving along. Any other questions? Uh, next on the agenda is public dialogue. Do we have anybody signed up?
I want to thank Mr. Delazar, if I may. Mr. Delazar and his wife attended our community forum on Monday. I've had some very, very good questions, and very good feedback and suggestions, so I wanna thank her.
So I'm Mike Lassard, a history teacher at the high school, and I, I live in Wyndham. A couple of things that we're going towards, I think focusing on this, and hopefully don't divert from that. And I always like to pre-start this by saying, I love Wyndham. I know you can get a great education in Wyndham, okay? That being said, I know you were mentioned before, Mr. Gomez. Yes, we mentioned in our classrooms the importance of these tests numerous times. I know today, we went through a forty-slide PowerPoint on the SATs and the importance to them. On every benchmark, we try to do something. If it's class participation grade, or, you know, a grade for effort to, to help them. But there are a lot of tests, like Mrs. Lambert said, and it's hard to keep doing that. I, I guess the eleventh graders, if I'm right, they went through NWA testing three times in the past, maybe CAP, S-Back. Their midterms, like you said. And now even in our classes, we have decided in the history department, too, um, we have like four or five different tests for our own, um, evaluation. Those, three of those align directly with the SAT, primary source analysis, et cetera, et cetera. So we are giving, we just gave three of those in the fall, three of those recently, three more at the end of the year. So on top of the other tests, they are getting their own little, smaller benchmarks within our own classrooms, which are probably wearing the kids out even more. Uh, I should mention, though, that homework and student effort for my eleventh graders and tenth graders has not been up to par. Um, my honors, I'm getting about eighty percent homework return, and my other levels, I'm getting about a forty percent homework return, maybe fifty percent. That's not, um, helping us in the classroom. We've done papers, which I've also used for some of my guidelines, persuasive papers that they've, uh, worked on. We did it once, I got about seventy percent back. We did it again, the scores were lower. I had all these things we did, I can go about, talk about forever. I'm sure you don't wanna hear them all. We did a lot of time in the library to do a four paragraph research paper to get the skill down in doing their citing. I think I got about forty percent, thirty-three percent back for that, which is hurting their grades. So there is an issue there that we have to look at also. Um, the last thing I wanna talk about, if it's okay, is just, the new state standards for history, I believe, are asking us in the high school to start teaching US history after the Civil War. They're supposed to learn the other history prior to getting to our classroom, and we're supposed to start that this year. However, as you might know, under the special master, I believe, history was reduced in the middle school, so they're going to twice or three times a week, they're taking a history class. They're getting to us not knowing the Declaration of Independence that well, the Bill of Rights that well. And we don't have the time for them to dive into that as much as we'd like to, because of new state standards, which is also hurting on these tests. Now hopefully that clarifies some information for you. Thank you.
So in your school, they don't state social studies or anything? They have a area of the day?
Thank you.
So that, that obviously is an issue.
If we wanted to read the Declaration on Independence-
For an assessment, for an assessment, yeah.
For the subtlest papers.
Mr. Crane.
Mr. Crane is next.
My name is Henry Crane, and I live in Willimantic. And I'm very happy that you found out about this assessment, that you were upset about a hundred percent needs improvement on these students, because if we're gonna do algebra in the eighth grade, and we've just started doing that, uh, before, uh, this year, you got the benchmark that said that there were ninth grade students that didn't have an integrated math, and didn't understand the test, the questions. You need that before next year, when you take the test, you understand it, you understand some algebra, and you will see that number change, hopefully, because some of those students will have taken the Algebra One in eighth grade. I, I think that's very important, that you start out with, a true benchmark will show you before you did something, while you were doing it, and how effective was it, because you have the mark the year before that shows how much you needed it. So I'm very happy that you found out this year how much we needed it, and next year, how effective and how good these kids can be. Uh, so when they're taking Algebra One, uh, in eighth grade, and taking Algebra Two in ninth grade, or whatever it is that they're going to be taking in ninth grade, they will understand more of the questions, more of what's going on, and will have a better answer next year. You can't get that next year if you didn't do this year. That's effective education. I'm very happy that you did this. And regardless, I, I think it's a better self with my neighbors when it comes budget time. I know this is not a budget workshop, but I think it's very effective, uh, for educational purposes. And I'm very happy that, um, you have an algebra teacher in the eighth grade for all the classes, not just as many as you could find a teacher for. Uh, you do need a coach for the high school, but you can go find one, and hopefully you will find one. Um, but I'm happy that you did something, rather than just ignore so many students in the classroom, and hope that summer school or something might get them. Uh, whatever they lost, I would advocate here and now, shamelessly. But, uh, summer school is for, if you failed it, hopefully they will not be failing it. And by getting a classroom teacher on a Tuesday or a Wednesday, uh, in the middle of the school year is a whole lot better than getting a teacher on a Tuesday or Wednesday in June, when they're looking at summer vacation, and who cares about summer school. We really want all the education we can get into these kids during the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Anyone else would like to speak that did not sign up? No one. So, next on the agenda is board comments. Mrs. Lambert?
Um, I see Mr. Delvento back there, so I will speak for him. We all received an email from him today, and I'd like to just repeat, as I have in the past couple of board meetings, that this Friday, there is the, um, music department pasta dinner. You will get, for eight dollars for adults, and five dollars for students, you will get a lasagna meal, salad, cake, and a drink. Um, and the jazz band will be performing, which should just be worth the five or eight dollars right there.
You guys didn't hear us. Did you have rehearsal tonight?
I could hear you, yeah. We could hear you. It was great.
Oh, I don't-
No, it was great. But, um, I'd just like to remind the community and anybody watching, as well as my fellow board members, that on Friday, there is that, um, that fundraiser coming up. And then I would like to ask Dr. Garcia, if you just have a minute, if you could explain the brouhaha about a field trip going on. Um, there's a field trip issue though, Wyndham Regional Arts Council, and I know it had something to do with testing. I'm not accusing, I'm just asking if we could have an explanation. I think a public forum is the best way to do it, so it kinda puts it to bed once and for all, if you don't mind.
So in order to talk about field trip, let me go back and talk about what happened in the past here. Um, so for the, for the past, at least in my time last year, and I know during that, in the masking time, he wanted to put the stop to it, and I think, um, the school tested very early, and testing was over, and then they have all what they wanted to do. So if testing was over May fifteenth or April fifteenth, it was over. This year with the new S-Back, we have a very, the window of testing a little bit more to the, more in the May, end of April and May, and June, actually. So our testing window is April twenty-fifth to May thirtieth. Is that for the district, our testing window? April thir, twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
April twenty-fifth?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Thirty.
May thirtieth. So if they are testing during that time, if the, the classroom is testing during that time, they can't have a field trip. If they're, if they finish, if they finish their testing in May twenty, twenty-second, they can go on a field trip on May twenty-third. But this is what comes first, the chicken or the hand, the chicken or the hand, or the hand or the chicken. If they are testing, a taste assessment, they can't. My concern is even more than that. My concern is the, is the instructional time, and really protecting instructional time. Somebody does say today, there's a perception, and actually you said, there's a perception that our students are not performing well, et cetera. And so, um, we want our students to be well-prepared for those assessments. They will be in the newspaper, and there will be another conversation about, about perception, and about how students, students perform. So I am not against the field trip, uh, but it's important that, I don't know, maybe the board want to- want to unrule my decision, but if there's a testing going on on May the third, how can somebody can go on a field trip on May the second? But if the testing is over May the eighteenth, they can go on their field trip. Another thing is, second grade in case not taking these assessments, so second grade in case, you know, should go. My only concern is, once you start, once you finish with your testing, there's not much more that goes on in the school district. So once you start having all those field trips, you create another type of environment for kids. So there are two separate type of environment, one that they're prepared to take these assessments, and ones that said, school is coming to an end, summer is coming, and we all understand those, even us adults are looking forward to summer. I don't know Mr. Delazar, but I'm looking forward to summer. So we want to make sure that kids can have both, that they can be well-prepared and emotionally ready to take their tests and ready for their summer.
Thank you.
But in that particular case, there are two days, and I think one day is really not possible, but I think the second day could be possible.
Okay. I just received three calls from three different members of the Wyndham Regional Arts Council, saying that they were told that they could not have the field trips, and they had already paid for them ahead of time and let the staff, and you're responsible for your staff, so you need to find out a way next year to make sure that the dates are more accurately communicated, because they paid for these things ahead of time, the buses and stuff like that, and then after the buses were paid for, they were told that the students couldn't go on the field trip. And they, I think, would just like to be notified in a timely manner, so they don't waste that money on buses, because the dates are not set by them, they're set by the New England Symphony or Opera, some New England regional thing, and they are provided with the tickets as long as they can pay for the buses. So I don't want our students to lose out on these opportunities to go to the opera and the symphony for some of these students, this is the only opportunity they may have in their, their young life, maybe even in their adult life, to realize some of these activities, and I'm sure you know, all the studies show that when students are enriched with cultural activities like this, and how we've had a hard time maintaining music programs and stuff like that in our district in the past, making sure that they can see the greater good of having these music opportunities eventually trickles down into their, their academic life and, and their, the fullness of their actual life. So just making sure that in the future, there's better communication, and I know a lot of organizations, you know, the honor societies and everything else, wait till May to do their field trips, when the bulk of the testing is over, when the weather's better, and they don't have to worry about snow days or rain days so much and stuff like that. So maybe looking towards the earlier part of our window of having these tests and taking the test then, as opposed to waiting till the later part, so that way the kids can have these opportunities to be outdoors for field days and field trips and stuff like that.
Mrs. Lambert, I agree with you, but I will say, there's no need to have two months of field, field trip.
No.
And field days.
Well, we get off June ten.
So once you start having, once you start having your assessment in fifteen of April, mid-April, there's lots of field trip, there's sixty days of field trip, and I think as superintendent, that three weeks of field trip is sufficient. Like I said, instructional time is precious.
I don't disagree with that.
Number two, there was communication, and good communication with the principal. I will encourage you to find out from the person who called you if they checked with the principal and those date, because I did not communicate with that person, it's not, no need, but I did communicate with the principal, and this was a meeting with our principal getting all the information. So, you know, my communication was with the principals and not with individual person.
I just don't want to alienate a, a community group that is trying to help our students in any way, shape, or form.
Sure, I agree, I agree.
And I don't want to alienate them when it comes time to voting for our high school innovation, or the budget, or anything like that. I don't want bad feelings being engendered because of something simple like this that could have been taken care of with an email by somebody at some point.
So I think one of those day, like I say, is maybe a little difficult, but the second day, I think is possible. And I, today, some schools rearranged their schedule, and we're working their schedule, and, you know, partnership mean, partnership mean it goes both ways, not one way, and I, I think it can be done, but it's communication being both ways. The partnership organization cannot set date for the schools without really checking with the school to see what's going on and what's going to happen. So we will encourage the principal to have those conversations early on, and make sure that the partnership organization understand that we want our kids to do well also, we want them to go to the opera, but we want them to do well on the assessment also.
Absolutely, thank you.
I would comment on that, you know, maybe needing a hundred percent of our students needing improvement in math, I think a field trip comes secondary to it. I mean, I think we should really pay attention, maybe they should not go on a field trip, maybe they should take some extra math courses, because a hundred percent and ninety-one percent, that's, I don't think we can be thinking about field trips all this much. I'm really concerned about what I saw in those grades, so I'm really thinking not to take away field trips or the value of them, but I think we need to prioritize.
Okay, so, so I'm glad that you made a comment.
By the way, we need to do something about this grade, and I think I would urge you to do something before the end of the year.
Okay, so, so let me, if I may?
Absolutely.
Okay, I appreciate your comment regarding field trip, but I want to clarify once again that, that a hundred percent, and by the way, it's questionable. Like you, I have asked my director of accountability and research to really look into this very carefully, and he's a very smart and capable gentleman, so I know he will, but I want to emphasize that basically, and let me say it in plain English, they were giving the wrong assessment. Is that correct, Mr. Neal? They were giving the wrong assessment. Once they took the right assessment based on their course, it changed.
Hi, whom? Who gave them the wrong, the wrong assessment?
Well...
We did.
We did, the district, the high school, the district gave them the wrong assessment. That was not the assessment that they're supposed to take. They should have taken this, the one that we gave them in the, in the, in the winter was the correct assessment. So the one that they took in the fall was incorrect. So they could take integrated algebra in the future, but then we will have to change our curriculum.
Integrated math.
Integrated, yeah, so that we could do that, they could take that, but then we will have to change our curriculum. So when we're talking about the test, and we, we gave them an assessment that did not match the curriculum program that we have. So we corrected that in the second assessment, and as you see in the second assessment, when we gave it to them, the correct one that matched our curriculum, they did much better. There was not a hundred percent needs improvement, actually, there was sixty percent proficiency.
So anything we do is improvement.
We're improving, we're not there yet.
Yeah, a hundred percent failing, I mean, needs improvement, anything we do is gotta be improvement.
Well, but, but the problem was the wrong test.
It's the wrong test.
I understand.
This is our initial foray into this, into this type of testing, so it's not surprising that there's some glitches that, that need to be worked out, including some questions about some of the questions, but...
Yes.
And, and the question about, did anybody really validate this stuff?
Haven't been able to prove that either.
Which, well, I can tell you, the publisher didn't really do validation.
No.
So, but nevertheless, the, the, what we're getting is useful and encouraging. It's clear from what we saw tonight that, that two things that we need to think about are incentivizing students so that the tests matter to the student, you know, even in college, you know, the first time you ask a student to do something, the question is, are we going to get graded on this? You know, and, but, but what I found was that sometimes, you know, a half of one percent of a course grade would create lots of motivation, so it's, you know, it's, as long as the answer is in some way, yes. But there are other ways, but anyway, we need to worry about that. And I think, and I believe others also would agree with that, we need to disconnect this testing from the teacher evaluation system. There are lots of ways to evaluate teachers, and, and even some other tests that, I think the, the S-Back, for example, was...
Not this year, next year, the S-Back is not this year.
Yeah, the state wants to include it.
Right.
I know the state, but this is our test, it's not the state's test, so we don't have to include it in teacher evaluation, and, and if we want it to work the way we want it to work, we shouldn't.
Well, we shouldn't add any more testing, I can tell you that.
And, well, that, and that's the other thing.
Those poor third graders are taking DIBELS benchmarks.
Then we also need to look at how much time students spend taking tests of various kinds and working out ways that they take less. One way, I eliminated testing altogether by using clickers. So I basically gave, asked students questions in every class that I taught, and, and the computer saved the data, and at the end of the semester, I had, I had the equivalent of a midterm and a final that I collected every, every class I taught. So, I mean, there are ways of, of gathering the information without telling people, sit down and take a test, and so maybe we need to look at, at some other solutions for at least some of the things that we do.
I think we do.
Well, I, I also would say, we need to read the research, and we need to look at the practice of how school district improve across the country. There is very, there's lots of examples across the country of how students improve, and one of the, the tool is to have a benchmark assessment, to look at how kids are progressing and what they're learning. If, if the district doesn't want to have a benchmark assessment, it will be much difficult to figure out our kids progressing and how they're doing.
I don't think we're saying eliminate a benchmark assessment, I think we're trying to figure out a way to kind of coalesce some of these assessments together, so they can serve multiple purposes.
So, so let me say, the district only has two benchmarks, two assessments, the benchmark and DIBELS. A lot of the assessments are coming from school or teacher-develop. They have their own midterm assessment, that's not us.
And S-Back.
S-Back is the state.
Right, but that's a third assessment that these students have to take.
Yeah, so, so, but teacher, individual teacher and department are having unit assessment, midterm assessment, they are creating, so it's a combination of what they're creating in their schools plus what we have, but the district does, does not only have two, what is the benchmark assessment and the maps. If you're giving the maps, you don't need to have a unit of a textbook assessment, and we're discussing that.
So there's the maps, there's the DIBELS, there's the...
DIBELS, but just the different kids are taking them.
Right, there's the benchmarks, and there's the S-Back.
Yeah.
Plus classroom, so that's five on any given grade level.
But you see, you, you don't need the classroom, because your map could be your classroom assessment. Your map could be your classroom assessment.
But we haven't integrated the two yet.
What do you mean integrating?
We haven't made it so that way that works together.
But, but what, that's what we're saying to schools and to principal, teachers don't have to have those, the maps can be your classroom assessment.
So what do teachers think about it?
Well, the assessment piece of the map has been a little bit troublesome, one of the reasons is that they don't get to see the actual questions of the map, but they do get...
Which is what Mrs. Lambert mentioned before.
Yeah, but they do get to, but you know, the research is very clear about that, teachers don't have to see the assessment, but teachers should know what standard's going to be tested, what skill's going to be tested, what the format of the question will be, what are kids going to be asked to do, what is expected of them, but, but seeing the question of the test is not important.
But it could be important, because you're saying that the HMH that we had earlier had historical documents that Mr. Lassard had said they don't see till junior or senior year, if at all. So we're not making sure that the curriculum maps and what's being taught in the classroom is something these students have ever seen.
I don't hear your question, what you said.
Mr. Del, I, we talked about how on the HMH, there was a, a science lab, there was a historical document, there was something about suffrage, if they aren't seeing, what did you say, Vietnam War on?
Declaration of Independence.
Declaration of Independence.
Civil War on.
Civil War on, okay, so they are going to see no Declaration of Independence documents, no documents of any kind of that type, that's a concern, that if they're not being exposed to these, then it's impossible for the teacher to prepare them to see those kind of documents. I'm not attacking, I'm just bringing up points.
No, no, I know, I just want to answer the question, very good point, but then that's when the district comes in, that's when we come in and say, these are the things they asked them to do in these assessments, are they prepared to do it? What, what do we need to do to prepare them? So maybe Declaration of Independence should not be in tenth grade, what grade they should have Declaration of Independence, Mr. Delazar?
They're supposed to learn, this is brand-new from the state, supposedly, we're supposed to do it up to middle school, I'm not sure, I know when they get to us, it's after their Civil War on.
So, so in that particular case, then the assessment is correct, because they should know something about the Declaration of Independence when it comes to the high school.
But they're not getting it in middle school because of their limited exposure.
It'll be correct, it'll be correct in four years, that's not doing us any good now.
But it's also something we have to be concerned about, they're going to see it on the SAT and the PSAT, and I know that slowly but surely, it's being phased out for college applications and stuff like that, but for a lot of colleges that our students are applying to, these historical documents are something they should know something about. And so it's a concern that they're not seeing these, and then they're getting this on an assessment, where if they haven't been exposed to many, if at all, any historical documents, they're going to freeze up on that test, they're not going to know some of the, the language even that's on there.
So, so that's one of the changes that have become occurring, that's one of the changes that not only our school district is going through, our school district, we've been teaching fiction the majority of the time, okay? So now, the change, the change of teaching is that now it's nonfiction, and now, even in social studies with the Declaration of Independence, I'm pretty sure Mr. Delazar will ask different questions, because now the question is text-based, evidence-based, that's the new way of teaching. So definitely, you will see that, but that's where the district comes in and say, what needs to take place in eleventh grade, on the test, what can we change, what can we eliminate, how can we change it? Those are the things that, that we need to do to help those eleventh graders.
I'm just, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm not trying to be accusatory, I'm just concerned that, of course, our students are going to see this assessment, and if you see something that's historical-based, that you've never, early American language was not what language is like today, you see it and you don't understand the vocabulary, because sometimes some of these words can be keywords to the meaning of the sentence, and then you see the multiple choice questions that go with it, and you have no idea what any of these things are, you freeze up, and then you just A, B, C, D, which is one of the reasons they're just blowing off their benchmarks.
So, so very good point, so my suggestion would be that we need to find a strategy, but not to, and to your point, not to do away with it, because the reality is that they're expected to do that, and to, to respond to those text questions on the SAT, on the S-Back. So our job is, how can we infuse those strategies in eleventh grade and tenth grade, not to do away with it, because by doing away with it, we're not going to help them.
But I think the whole point, I think if I understand Mrs. Lambert, is that the district needs to ensure that the content of any test is material that has been seen in the courses, and the students are prepared, or they should be prepared, in reality, to answer those questions.
You can't guarantee they've seen the Federalist Papers, but maybe they've seen this Constitution and the Bill of Rights before they take this test, so they know what that historical language looks like.
Okay, Neal, could you come in here, because I guess I'm not explaining it correctly? The maps, they will see the content, because the map is what I taught the six weeks, and the benchmark, when they take it the first time, there will be content that they have not seen.
Correct.
When they take it the second time, there will be material that they have not seen, but in less quantity. When they take it the third time, you will see that they have covered much, much more material, because it's a benchmark and it's a parallel assessment, you want to explain that a little bit? Because what they're saying is that the material and the content that they have not seen.
So, yeah, the, the benchmark, the, the grade two to eleven benchmarks essentially are an end-of-year test that are given three times, so it's essentially a massive pre-test in the fall.
Pre-test and post-test. Pre-test, apply treatment, and then give you the post-test.
Yes.
Right, yes, yes, that's what it is.
Correct.
That's what each curriculum map has, is a pre-test and a post-test.
The maps, which are separate than the benchmark.
The benchmarks, I understand.
The maps are required to have a post-test by the district.
Yes.
High school, some high school subjects, I know, have made a pre-test, but that's not required, but some do it, because obviously, if you give a pre-test, it helps you measure improvement over the course of the treatment, like you said.
Thank you, you did a great job.
Oh, that was good.
I don't think that, I don't think I doubt that these things are all necessary, I just want to make sure that our students aren't being set up to fail, and that they're being exposed to what they need to be exposed to, to be successful, when they take our, our tests within the district, and our ACT, and our PSATs, and our SATs.
Well, I can assure you that difference than last year, when I came, that none of this was in place, we are preparing them to fail, we are preparing them to be successful. When I came last year, none of this was in place, I, this is in place now, and it does, it's a work in progress, we need to make some adjustment, but to the contrary, Mrs. Lambert, what we're doing now is preparing them to be successful.
And I want to add something, I really, today, I saw some improvement, and I want to congratulate you, I think you're trying very hard, and still, we have a long way to go, and just keep at it.
Well, I want to thank my team, and there are two members on my team, there are three, four members on my team here, I want to thank my team, and the teachers, and, and all the principal, because it's a team effort, it's not one person, I'm the leader, but it's, even the people that are not in instruction, like Darryl Lynn, contribute to what is taking place, so I want to thank all of them.
We need more math.
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Suba, in a future workshop, can we look at the PSATs that were administered Mrs. Suba, in a future workshop, can we look at the PSATs that were administered to all the seventh and eighth graders? Can we get some data on that?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how the group did, I only got Andrew's, so.
We, we have the data, we, we could, yeah, we, we look at it, but we could, the PSAT data.
Yeah, we did a very, very short script that we.
Then the retreat, right, yeah.
Yeah, no, it can be added on to the end of a workshop meeting or something like that. I just want to know district-wide, I know it was the first year that all the seventh and eighth, seventh and eighth graders or just eighth graders?
Eighth graders. Eight, eight graders, eight to nine.
Eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh took the PSATs?
Correct.
Okay. So how, what that data looks like, and so that way, in the future, we have something to compare it to as well.
Yeah, we, we didn't go into full description, because we were questioning their, the way, how they reported the data. We had some question about it, and I don't know how they answered our question yet.
Not yet, they, they said certain things that, that benchmarks, but, and, and inquiring in other districts in similar dirks, dirg I, dirg H, they were also questioning the same things. For, with similar scores percentile-wise, there was some difference in, in English and math